On September 1st, 2014. Maureen?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Lord, and Council members. I'm here tonight to bring back information concerning the special event ordinance. And on February 9th of this year, council suspended the special event ordinance for 90 days to review issues that have been brought forward from staff, council, and citizens. Staff has made recommendations on changes to the ordinance, and we're asking for direction on those changes tonight. And there are several staff members available tonight with their area of expertise to help with any questions that you may have. So, the goal of the special event ordinance is to encourage and promote events in Goodyear, but at the same time, making sure that the public is safe. After implementing the ordinance, last fall, it was realized that the ordinance needs to be revisited because it may be overly broad. This spring, we sent out 35 surveys to applicants who have had events in the last several months, and we asked them to list any concerns with the special event ordinance that they encountered, and any ideas on how we can improve the application process. We received six responses back, and we also followed up with several HOAs to find out what type of events that they currently have in their neighborhoods. And some of those events include movie in the park, game, annual picnics, community yard sales, and holiday decoration contests. And we also spoke to the general manager at Pebble Creek, and they have events in the parking lot, such as the arts festival that they hold every year. And then this year, they had the Desert Fest. And both of these events had vendors and outdoor cooking, and they expected over 200 people. He also mentioned that residents have block parties, but he wasn't sure how many have taken place. And there's also weddings at Tuscany and other events that take place in their ballroom. Palm Valley Community Center has weddings and other types of events that they have in the back of their center, on that grassy area. And then the Residents Club in Australia hold quite a few events during the year. Canamea has a couple of events that require large, marquee tents. So, the first issue I'd like to review is the number of attendees at the events. And currently, the special event ordinance applies to any outdoor event with 50 or more attendees. And that's even when the property is zoned for and intended to be used for large gatherings. And examples of these are bocce ball, pickleball tournaments at Pebble Creek, pet parade at the Pebble Creek Golf Course, and any other types of events held at community centers, such as weddings, and then, of course, gatherings at city parks. So, staff is proposing to amend the ordinance so that it would apply to any outdoor event that has more than 250 people instead of 50. And this would eliminate the need for citizens to get a permit at the parks unless they have 250 or more people. The areas that are zoned for this purpose would not need to get a permit unless they have more than 250 people. And the police and fire chief agreed with the 250 attendance because with that amount of people, there could be traffic circulation and parking issues that could arise. We'd also like to address amplified sound, and currently, the ordinance applies to any outdoor event that involves amplified sound. And this could result in a special event permit with possibly 10 people in a park with a boombox. And so, staff is proposing to amend the ordinance to eliminate the use of amplified sound, and as a criteria to trigger a special event permit. And noise complaints would be addressed by the police department if the issues arise with that.
Joe?
Just a quick question. Do we have a decibel limit for noise at any time, or is it after a certain time at the city?
I'm not sure. Does anybody know?
Not that I'm aware of.
So, there's no sound as far as, you know, somebody's practicing a four-piece band out there, playing a little...
No, you just have...
...sepolon or something.
I think generally, you just have a disturbing the peace type of state statute that you proceed, and it's disturbing the peace of a reasonable person, so...
See, they'd have to do...
No, we do not have a decibel standard.
So, there'd be a reasonableness whether it's too loud or not when the police get there?
And you take into account the circumstances, time of day.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, the next area I'd like to review is block parties. Currently, a special event permit required for block parties when they're held in public and private roadways. And there's two objections with block parties. One is the need for written consent from those residents that are affected by the closed street. And the other one is the special event application fee requirement. And there's two very important reasons why block parties should be regulated, and that's because it's illegal to block public roadways and right-of-ways, and also, there's public safety concerns. And the police and fire department chiefs were consulted about the need for regulations of block parties, and they both believe regulations are warranted for both public and private streets. And the block party guidelines are listed in the rules and regulation that was adopted pursuant to the ordinance.
So, excuse me, Mayor.
Yes, Wally?
You're saying to have a block watch party, we have to have a permit even if you may only have 20 people there?
Yes, we need to have for the...
But we don't block the street. It's called block watch, but we don't block the street. We have it in our backyards.
Oh, no, that's fine, as long as they're not blocking the street. That's the main concern.
Okay. Well, because where we live, if you block the street, you have to get permit from the HOA and everything else, and have barriers, and they take care of all of that.
Correct, yes.
But we do have parties that are in the common area where, you know, the walkways, and we don't, we're not...
That's not a street.
No, that's not a street, but they're parking on the street, but they're not blocking the street.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
So, staff is proposing to amend the requirements for block parties by eliminating the consent required from each resident that's being affected by the street closure, and also eliminating the use of only having city-approved traffic barricades, and eliminating the special event application fee, which I will also be talking about in a future slide. And then persons holding the block parties, though, will still be required to have barricades, but they need to be easily moved so the emergency vehicles can get through quickly. And these changes would address public safety personnel's primary concerns, and safety and emergency access, because they can weigh in on the appropriateness of the proposed location to make sure that everybody is safe and that the emergency vehicles can get through. And these changes should eliminate some of the barriers to holding block parties by making the application process easier and eliminating the fees. So, the next area I would like to review is fees, and I'm going to be using the word respondents quite a bit, and what that is referring to is to those who return the surveys, as well as council and staff comments that I receive back. So, certain respondents thought a special event application fee should not be charged because they made these events too costly, and certain respondents thought the special event application fee should not be charged because it was double-dipping. And that was due to paying the application fee and any other fees associated with that event, such as your fire and building fees. Staff is recommending the special event application fee be eliminated for all special events, and this will not affect other, the fees that are owed, such as the building and fire, but it would just be the fee charged to cover the administrative costs of processing the application. And the reason staff supports these is because charging those fees apparently discourages these type of community events, and that we want to try to encourage. And charging the fees results in noncompliance because those who should probably be getting a permit are not doing so because of that application fee. And then it defeats the purpose of the regulations. Staff doesn't have the opportunity to weigh in on the safety of that event and the public welfare concerns. And then it could jeopardize the success of an event because they might have the event shut down because they don't have the proper permits. And I just wanted to let you know that the fees charged are nominal, and the work required by the clerk's office is that of a clearinghouse. So, to let you know what we're charging currently is for a small event, which is less than 50, we're charging $20. For a medium event, for 50 to 200 participants, it's $40. And then for a large event, more than 200 people, is $80.
Joanne?
Does some of this that you're talking about come into play from what Australia Mountain Round should sense with a lot of their big events that are on their HOA grounds and things like that?
Yes, some of that, yes. That was from their comments, too.
Maureen, I understand why we would, why we would not charge a fee for the very small events, but if the permit now is only going to be required for 250 persons or greater, which seems to have a significant impact on the city itself, which could be, you know, a giant, you know, I'm thinking a thing by the lake up in Australia, or a big, you know, a big event in another, another area of the city, and it's going to require police and fire to either do an inspection, or, you know, additional, you know, work, why would we not charge a fee for that?
Oh, no, we would, we would still charge the fee for the fire and building codes permits. It's the application fee that we're wanting to eliminate.
Just for the...
Just the application fee.
Just to come in and fill out the papers?
Yes.
Got it, okay.
Yes. The fire and building code fees would still be in effect.
Okay, that was clear. All right, thanks.
Okay, sorry. So, the next area I'd like to review is other fees, such as fire and building safety fees. And that's probably, I'll explain this a little bit. Certain respondents complained that other fees charged for special events, for example, fire fees are required for tents or canopies of a certain size, and then there's building fees that would be required for temporary structures, such as a stage. And then there's other fire fees that would be required for other types of operations, could be a carnival of some type. And so, these respondents argued that the fees make the event too costly. And the fees at issue are primarily the building and fire fees, and those were adopted by council through the user fee schedule. Staff is not recommending any change to the policy with respect to these fees, and the fees are charged based on the activities associated with that event. So, the fees are to cover the cost of the plans reviewers and inspectors, and there's times that they would be going out after hours to inspect these events. So, we want to not charge, so not charging for these fees results in the city, as a whole, subsidizing events that sometimes are not even open to the public. An example of this is a large, private wedding that could require inspection, and then there's also events that are profit generating.
So, what are the fees? What are the fees now?
There's several fees that they charge, and I can give you an example. For example, like a main fee, like a general fire permit fee is $200, and I think they charge for like a bonfire is $90.
And so, Wes, we're questioning, are you a question, are you curious because of that? You think it's too high?
Well, yeah.
Okay, how about somebody talking to us about what it costs an hour for who's ever involved in that? So, we're talking about, when it's set, we're talking about police and fire, and so, what are we talking about? Just kind of break this down. Question on this one. I appreciate that.
And, Wally, did you understand what I was asking for? For like carnivals, fairs, and outdoor assembly events, it's $200, amusement buildings, or haunted house, or $200.
So, what would partake of that? Tell the council, who would be there? And the hourly wage that the city has to pay for this, okay? This is not a freebie, so it's going to cost the city.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Typically, on an outdoor event, the building inspector will go out there and spend two to three hours inspecting the event, making sure everything's safe. As with fireworks, they stay there from the time of setup all the way to the end of the show, which could be six hours. And on a big fireworks display, we charge $350. When you're paying an employee overtime to be there, because it's after hours, you're probably looking at about $80 an hour for the inspector to be there.
So, who does big fireworks? Do you charge our ballpark back? I mean, I've never been to a fireworks show in Goodyear except at the ballpark.
Maybe a school.
They've had them before. Other people have had fireworks.
They do them up at Australia.
They've had them. You just haven't been there, or not invited, something like that, but there are a number of those things that happen.
The high schools do them quite a bit, homecoming and big events at football games.
Graduation.
Have they complained about the fees?
Graduations. They haven't complained to my department.
But I can tell you, repercussions of us not having this and something going wrong would be huge for the city.
Well, but I'm not saying, I'm just saying, is the fee appropriate? I'm not saying, let's not do the fee.
That's why I'm asking him to tell you.
I mean, the inspection, I'm sorry.
Tell you right now, is that appropriate?
We try and do cost recovery.
Okay.
To make sure that we're getting reimbursed for the time spent.
Okay.
So, it doesn't, doesn't come into our budget.
I don't want them to think we're making money on them, is what I'm getting at.
No, we're not making money on these fees.
Okay.
Councilmember Campbell, I also wanted to let you know that we do waive fees for the schools because they are public schools.
Oh, I wonder they don't complain.
Yes.
All right, well...
That was, that was going to be my question. I believe that we, even before we waived them, and we were quite, when we talk about the carnival, that just a little set-up carnival, it's the mechanical rides and stuff that you're looking to inspect, not the, like when Australia does a little carnival, or people are hiding under tables and going, "Go fish" or something, and, you know, cakewalks. That's not what we're inspecting.
No, we're not. We're inspecting carnivals that have cooking facilities.
Yeah, and I think that's...
And run a lot of extension cords to make sure they're not hazardous to the public there.
So, the churches and the schools doing stuff on their own property that are small is not what we're talking about here. We're talking about bringing the fireworks, the mechanical rides, and...
Right, the larger scale, larger-scale events.
And, Wally, I'll invite you to the fireworks next time they're up at Australia.
Please do. Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed it. I must have blinked.
Yeah, and I think somewhere in this information, it said that about the schools that we had, so... Go ahead.
So, the next area I'd like to review is fee waivers, and we kind of got into this a little bit. The ordinance currently provides for a waiver of fees, other than the special event application fee, for special events sponsored by schools and 501(c)(3) corporations. But with the change of the ordinance, certain community center, or I'm sorry, community events will no longer be special events, and that would not require, they would not require a special event permit. So, however, depending upon the activity, the event may still require other permits. And for example of this is if a 501(c)(3) organization has a, an event in a park, and they have the large air inflatable, bouncy house, air structures, that type of thing that are in excess of 400 feet, well, those require a fire permit. So, it would not trigger a special event permit because if they have less than 250 people, it's not going to trigger that special event permit, but they're still going to need a fire permit fee for that. And so, currently, there's no ability to waive the fire fees for this event because it's not a special event.
Joanne?
So, and this probably goes to you and to Rourke. When we are talking about things that are on city property, like parks, and we already have a threshold of liability insurance that covers anything that's going on in parks, are there, within our liability insurance, are there specified segments that say, "This does not include blank, 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 blank"? So, is that why we have to come back and come up with these specifics? Is that why we have to drill it down on this side of it because we're not covered of it liability-wise for the city without it?
Right. I know specifically fireworks is not covered. You have to buy rider policies for that.
But bouncy houses?
I don't believe they're covered.
I mean...
Bouncy houses are covered, or I think that was excluded.
We aren't covered for bouncy houses, or any inflatables?
Come on up. Yeah, come on up.
But our, but our policy would provide premises liability, so we would...
You're not on, by the way. No, that goes, okay.
So, if we were to have events, and Maureen will get into this a little later, but we were talking about events at parks, and parks are intended to have large gatherings, so the question is, why are we making them have insurance? So, unless they're renting facilities from us, and we're kind of a landlord position, we will be asking for authority to also amend the insurance provisions so that they're not automatically required for any event on the city park. It would be based on rules and regulations promulgated by, by staff. But with respect to events on parks, we, our liability would just be that as an owner. So, I think for premises liability, we're not operating the bouncy houses, and we should have coverage for those.
Well, that's why I was just thinking, if we had some kind of umbrella coverage that was really, you know, the umbrella of everything, that's why I wondered why we had to drill it down so specifically to certain spot. Fireworks, I would never argue that, but I'm thinking the bouncy houses. I'm thinking about some of these other normal things that you would just think, if you're having, people can get more hurt playing soccer in...
In a park.
Potholes in a park that we have than a bouncy house that somebody's jumping on air. I mean, you know, it's just, you never know. Something's going to happen, something's going to happen, and so, that's why you carry umbrella policies, and that's just...
And that's one of the changes that we're looking for, that Maureen will discuss with you, in terms of the insurance, insurance provisions, because that was another impediment. It's like if you're just having a birthday party, and...
Right.
You have 250, 250 people, you're not really renting anything from the city, we were requiring them automatically to have insurance at the park, and that is another revision that we're looking, that we saw as a problem in, in terms of the enforcement of this.
Sarah spent a lot of time reading through exclusions, which I think she really appreciated in this exercise in our insurance policies.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
So, staff, oh, I'm sorry.
If you have a bouncy house at my house, I want one for my grandson's birthday. He's 14, let's just say. Does this, this requirement kick in, or is this just on public streets and city property that we're talking about?
Actually, that is on your insurance.
Well, yeah, well, I mean, obviously.
You're going to be liable for that.
But that's why you carry, that's why I carry umbrella policy. I mean, that's why you carry that kind of stuff, so that's, you would think the city...
There would be no requirement to have a fireman inspect that, would it?
If it were of a certain size, you would probably have to have a fire permit. Those inflatables, I think, that are over 400 square feet in size, that would be a very large...
That's a big, that's a real biggie. That's not what you're having for...
That's over kilogram.
But normally, but the normal bouncy houses that you see would not trigger a need for a fire permit.
I just wanted to make sure of that.
So, staff is proposing to amend the ordinance to allow for waivers of fees for these type of neighborhood events sponsored by public schools and/or 501(c)(3) corporations. And if the ordinance is amended to reflect this change, then staff will create a fee waiver application that we can use.
Sherilyn?
I feel compelled to ask this question. Why just 501(c)(3)'s? Why not nonprofit organizations?
501(c)(3) is our designation of a nonprofit.
I understand that, but it's not the only nonprofit, not-for-profit. You have other C, the Chamber, for example, is a C6.
Well, I think it was based on the nature of the 501(c)(3). They're more community...
It's a charitable.
Charitable and community, community organizations, as opposed to business organizations that are operated for nonprofit. I mean, we could have any number of business nonprofits that, you know, city shouldn't be subsidizing their, their events. So, it's, it's more based on, it's more based on the nature of the 501(c)(3). I think it's for charitable and community teaching.
I understand the difference, but I'm just saying there are other very valid organizations who are operating for a not-for-profit status that are not necessarily charitable, not-for-profit status, because perhaps they lobby or do something that requires them to go into another 501(c) category.
Right.
And that's why I'm asking the question. I mean, I...
Are you asking, are you, but your question, you think that we should have a permit?
Well, I think there could be a valid argument for it, yes. I mean, if the people very often don't understand the difference between the different 501(c) organization. I didn't mean to offend anybody.
So, Sarah, maybe part of the application can state 501(c)(3) or blank.
Well, and I get, that would be, you know, what we're looking for direction on, because we have historically, even before the ordinance was in effect, have waived only permits for 501(c)(3), and that's based on the types of organizations that qualify, that are viewed more as, as community, social, education, as opposed to...
Which the Chamber would be.
I'm just, just saying, you know, if there could be, because I thought I, and here again, I'm just blatantly going back to my experience, is that it may not have been stated, but the city manager did have the option to waive it at his discretion. And I thought I read somewhere where that was no longer possible. Because I think I kind of...
No, they're still doing it.
I don't, I don't recall us waiving, my recollection is that we've only waived them for 501(c)(3). That there's never been a formal policy adopted by council that allows for waivers of these fees for, for other organizations.
Maybe you didn't authorize it, but that's the way it happened.
Really?
I would write a letter, and then they would be, they would be waived, yeah, yeah. And I just think, and I don't think it was out of line, because somebody like the Chamber of Commerce is organized to, to benefit the community. I mean, their whole goal is to make the community a stronger place for businesses to succeed, granted.
And the, and the problem that you have is, I would, you know, that you have is, you can't just pick and choose. Chamber might be a worthy nonprofit that's not a 501(c)(3), but once you open it up, you have to open it up to all, and there may be many organizations that are technically nonprofit, but that the city doesn't necessarily want to subsidize, they don't view it as that kind of organization that, you know, is, is intended for that function. So, I agree with you, as the Chamber's function is for the betterment of that.
Brian?
And on this point, it, I'm not aware the manager waiving this might have been before, probably before my time, and I would just ask council that, you know, by policy, if you set that in place, because if you do a case-by-case for the manager to look at that and come up with a judgment call, it's, it's a tough situation, so I'd rather have it by policy. Then the question is really, are there some other 501(c) type organizations that, that you would want to have allowances for? And there, there can be several, and, and back to your point, Sherilyn, some of those can be lobbying organizations, C4s, for example, C6s, that are more business-oriented, so it's, it is a policy question.
I can just imagine if we do it for a lobbying organization. I can hear the public now, loud and clear.
Well, that's just an example, but there are, there's, like, I don't even remember how many 501(c)s there are, but there are, I knew at least 16. But they all, they all are not what I would consider the type of organization that necessarily would, would qualify for...
Give me a moment.
Sherry?
Go ahead, Douglas.
Well, I was just going to say, but I do think it, it warrants at least some thought, and perhaps a little, some consideration of, of a different types of organizations. Give me, if, if you're familiar, Sarah, with a 501(c) that, that would not warrant consideration?
Well, I don't think it would be up to me to say what would warrant consideration, and I don't know all of the nature, because I'm cheap.
Okay, I'm just saying blatantly saying that the 501(c)s, other than C3s, that is perhaps not the best thought.
I guess what I would look at, since you, you know, you've brought that up, is that what do the other cities do? Do they, do they possibly, have they spread their wings out into all these other 501? Three, whatever, sixes, sevens? I don't know all the numbers that are connected with it.
I looked at a lot of other cities' special events ordinances. I'm not sure they even waive the fees for the, you know, for the 501(c)(3)'s.
Yeah, I'm not sure all of them do either.
Or the, and, or the school districts. I think that's something that council has said, "We'd like to promote these types of activities for these types of organizations and support them." And even then, it's only subject to appropriation, because what happens is the city clerk gets a budget appropriation for fee waivers. It's on a first-come, first-served basis, and if the money's gone, then, you know, they have to pay the fees, so it's...
Are you adamant that, is anybody else, Sherry?
I'd just like to chime in. I totally, I hear your point, and it's a very valid point with the Chamber of Commerce. My concern is, we open the barn door, let the horse out, we can't get the horse back in. He's gone. And I think there's a lot of 501(c)(3), since that is vetted by the IRS, the IRS code, right? If I remember correctly. I filled out one a couple times. And the other 501(c) corporations, there's a percentage that can be used for lobbying, and some of them may not, and I'm not going to mention any specific names, but they may have very anti-views that maybe Goodyear doesn't support, and just may be very negative to our population in general. There's no requirements there, and it's only a percentage has to be, can be used for lobbying, and a percentage has to be used, in many cases, for some sort of education. So, knowing there's so many out there, my concern is, I like the... So knowing there's so many out there, my concern is, I, I like the 501(c)(3), that's the charity, I'm good with that. But I, I understand, and I do respect your point with the Chamber, because they're a great organization, it's just that blanket open-
And I understand that, but what are schools? They're not c)(3)'s. What are schools?
The school districts are political subdivisions that-
Charter, what is, what is, like, Litchfield Park, what, partially charter school, what's that?
Public government entities, I don't know.
Is it?
Yeah, and by, and by law, charter schools that take, you know, the public funds are considered public.
But I thought they had one of the C designations as well. I thought, again, I'm just thinking, I saw that somewhere.
I don't think they have a corporate designation, they're just a political subdivision. You might have some of the schools that are, and maybe they're not even 501(c), I think they're all 501(c)(3)'s, like the charter schools, but that would be kind of overkill for us, because we're required to teach, treat charter schools as the same as we do a normal public school, so, but I think you're right, I think that some of the charter schools are organized as 501(c)(3)'s.
I thought that's what Litchfield, Wally?
Well, a 501(c)(3) raises money and gives to the community. A 501(c)(6) must reinvest their money, and they don't necessarily give to the community. They do, but they don't, that's the difference. A, a 501(c)(3) is totally charitable, and we, you raise the money and you give it out to the community. So I really, I understand the Chamber's position, but I really don't want to open it up to everyone. I'm very comfortable with a 501(c)(3), because everybody knows what that is, and they know that it's a charitable organization, putting the money back into the community, and they're not making necessarily money that they'll keep over this event, it'll go back in somewhere. But a 501(c)(6) has to reinvest any of their earnings back into the business, and that's the difference.
Bill?
Can I just suggest, instead of writing it while we sit here, we just get some more information before you bring it back, on the different charities? Because I don't, we're not taking action on this tonight, is that correct?
Correct.
So you've got the feedback that there's some concern about the other charitables? Can we just get the information when we're ready to present it, instead of us trying to write the ordinance tonight?
On, on what charities?
On, yeah, on, none, none of us really know, other than a 501(c)(3).
Define what the other C's are.
The 501(c)(3) designation is for nonprofits. Charitable is the c)(3) designation. The others are nonprofit corporations. They may generate a certain amount of, of revenue, they just don't reach, you know, distributed profits. So there's 29 designations, I just looked it up, so.
So there may be only 27 of them that don't apply. Maybe there's 26, I don't know, but we're all gonna sit here, and we're all gonna figure out what one is. I'm just suggesting that maybe you guys take this information and come back, that's all I'm saying.
So you're looking for like a charitable or a civic type of nonprofit organization?
Is there one that covers everything that, that we've got, that we've had, that we want to consider? At the end of the day, it's still maybe 501(c)(3), but we're all sitting here guessing on what the 29 of them are, and maybe only 27 of them apply.
And I think actually probably two, two or three.
There we go, so, that, that's all I'm saying, is we're, we're not, we're not voting on it tonight, so we don't need a definitive answer tonight. That's just the concern. I'm just saying we can move this conversation along and-
Yeah, I, I, I'm not, as, I'm not concerned, but if the council is concerned, the number of you, then we'll go on to staff with this.
Can they find out what other cities do? That's important.
Do that.
I think we're looking more civic type of nonprofit organizations-
Right.
-charities, so we can kind of hone down on what those 501(c)s are. Definitions, give some examples, and bring that back.
What if we just said Chamber?
Chamber would be a C6.
You can't do that. You, I mean, I mean, if you just-
You start to become arbitrary and capricious, where you're just picking winners and losers.
All right, all right, I'm just, hey.
So anyway, you're gonna look into that, bring it back to us, okay, great.
We can give that option, and we bring it back.
Wide open. Go ahead, Maureen, we'll go on with this.
So the next area I would like to cover is insurance requirements, specifically on this particular slide is fireworks. Certain respondents raised issues related to the insurance requirements for fireworks. Currently, the ordinance requires special events having fireworks to require that fireworks vendors carry insurance in the amount of $5 million per occurrence, and with a $5 million aggregate. And certain respondents reported that their vendors advised they are having difficulty with fireworks vendors not being able to obtain that required insurance. So based on the recommendation, though, by risk management staff, who advised that higher limits are required in other jurisdictions for these type of events, we're not recommending any changes.
And I just heard today that we entered into a, a license to use private property owner, property over by, sometimes he's property over by the ballpark for fireworks, and they require that we provide that much coverage, and we were able to obtain that.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right, so the next insurance requirement area I would like to discuss is city property. Currently, the ordinance requires insurance to be carried for special events held on city property, and this includes events at city parks and block parties. Community parks, which are designed and intended for community gatherings, and having a blanket insurance requirement appears unnecessary. So also enforcing the insurance requirement for block parties has been a problem, because block parties are neighborhood events, and there's not just one person that's particularly in charge. So based on the input received from risk management and the Parks Department, staff is recommending that the ordinance be modified to only require insurance for special events in city parks, if required by the Parks Department, in connection with the rental of any portion of that park. And then the revisions would also allow the risk manager to require insurance if the special event presents risks to the city outside of that, outside the normal use of the community park. And then as far as block parties are concerned, there's a potential liability exposure to the city by allowing events that impact access to public and private streets. Staff is recommending that city, that the city absorb those risks by not requiring insurance for block parties. Staff is unaware of any claims arising from these type of events, and council members have made it, made clear their desire that these types of events, to be promoted.
Okay, go ahead.
And the next area I'd like to talk about is process-related issues. And in order to comply with the requirements of Senate Bill 1598, the process for special events contemplates a preliminary approval and a final approval for the special events being provided seven days before the event. Certain respondents expressed concern about this, because it did not provide them the necessary security to be comfortable moving forward with their event. Special event permits do not lend themselves to compliance with the requirements of Senate Bill 1598, and that's in terms of a single process with single timeframes, because the processing time will be dependent upon the nature of the activities associated with that event. So the preliminary and final approval process brought by the special events process outside of Senate Bill 1598 does not apply to permits that expire within the 21 days after the issuance. If council eliminates the special event application fee, staff will be revising the process to issue final approvals as soon as the application is processed, and that's regardless of how far in advance the event is. The reason for this change is that a penalty for failing to comply with Senate Bill 1598 is that permit fees have to be refunded, and if council does not eliminate the, decides not to eliminate the special event application fee, staff will revise its process to issue final approvals sooner than the seven days before the event.
Miss?
I think that's an excellent change, just pragmatically speaking.
All right, go ahead.
So the next area I'd like to talk about is the application process. Two respondents would like a one-stop shop for everything related to the special event to be processed in one department, and the concerns involve street closures for races, and then also events in city parks on this particular issue. Staff is not recommending any changes as a result of these concerns, as there is not one department that can process all the different permits. For example, we may have a fire permit, building permits, traffic control permits, contracts for off-duty public safety, and so the intent of the special event permit application is to serve as a clearinghouse for staff, and so we can identify what additional permits are needed in order to have that special event. So we don't want any complications for the day of the event.
Bill?
Maureen, do we require the applicant to physically go from your office to the PD, to the fire?
No, we sure don't.
You wanna tell the process of that?
Yes, what, what happens is, they fill out the application, they bring it in, we review it, we make sure all the documentations are included, we're asking for site maps. And at that point, then, what we do is then we go to all the departments, and we send it out to our stakeholders within the city to review the special event application, and then they come back to us and let us know what's required. If there's a fire permit fee required, then we reach back out to the applicant, so we're contacting the applicant for anything that's needed.
So it's a one-stop?
It is, it is, but they, when they do have fire permit fees, I'm not sure if they're actually going to the, you know, the department to talk with them about it, but we try to handle that all in the office to try to save them time.
There may be, I think there are instances, like especially with traffic control, where they have to submit a traffic control plan, say for a big, you know, the 26-mile race that we had, and there would be a lot of coordination where they would have to go to the, to, to the Streets Department to work that out with staff, because it's a very complex kind of process. Maureen will serve as a clearinghouse in sure, in terms of making sure that all of the necessary applications are completed, but there could be direct communications between, say, fire, if there's a problem with the application, or the building safety, if there's a problem with the site plan, so in that respect, it's not one-stop. She does, you know, she does serve as the clearinghouse to make sure that they know what's needed and getting the documentation, but after that, they, she really will work, other than to collect the permit, they'll have to work things out with the department sometimes.
And I think that's reasonable, I just wanted to make sure we weren't gonna, they didn't have to go to four or five different places, they'd go to one, and, and then if it's incomplete, then I think that's what it is. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
So one respondent raised concerns about the deadlines for submitting applications, and currently, the ordinance requires an application to be processed at least 30 days in advance of the event. And it does allow the city clerk's office to process the applications received less than 30 days in the event, as long as they can show good cause, and that all the permits are able to be pulled before the event. Staff is not recommending any reduction in the time limit for the submittals, and the 30-day deadline is for, far less than is required by other special event ordinances, and it's not unreasonable that a special event may require several permits as a result of these activities.
Go ahead. Sherlyn, no, no, go ahead.
Staff is, however, requesting that the ordinance be modified to require applications that involve the use of publics and private streets and roadways, such as parades and races. And so just to go through these quickly, the application deadline, what we're recommending is the following, the application deadline for events that will not involve any road closures would be 45 days before the event. An application deadline for roads involving more than five miles would be 90 days before the event, and if it's an event that entails road closures for more than five miles would be six months before the day of the event. And according to the Streets staff, these events require additional time to process because they require coordination of off-duty law enforcement and re approve, review and approval of the traffic control plans, as well as the public outreach.
And I'd like, just like to make one point, we're probably gonna work on some of these deadlines, because one of the other issues they raised, one of the reasons for the six-month closures would be for very long events, or multi-jurisdictional events, where you have to coordinate with other cities. I guess that, the IMS run went through three different cities, and so that was what we're looking at for the, for the longer races. So at first, we were looking at those deadlines, but I'm not sure we can't tweak some of them to try to get the shorter races and, and figure out which is which. Anytime it's gonna be multi-jurisdictional, though, it's gonna take longer, so it may be that the longer events and the longer timeframes have to be limited to the multi-jurisdictional ones, and then the longer events, even within the city, would have another deadline, and then the shorter events would have a deadline, is what I'm thinking.
So when you look at, when you look at this breakdown, can you, for memory's sake, think of an event that this timeframe caused heartache for, what, and maybe it didn't come because of it, or was it, was it a real problem for anything? I mean, obviously, the IMS is a huge event, and, and I can understand many things come into play here, but have there been other events that had to walk away because of the time process? Can you really think of many offhand?
We've, we've never turned anybody down for a special event, we try to work through that. I, I can't think of a specific event at the top of my head, but there are, maybe, we have a lot of 5K runs now, and those possibly could have happened. Although I do remember one, and I don't remember what it was called, in the last couple months, they gave us a very short timeframe, and so we were telling them, we've gotta get all these information, and they ended up not doing it, so, and I don't remember which one that was, but that was very-
Really, this hasn't been hard for, for a lot of people, this was, is what you're telling me.
Well, the current ordinance is just a 30-day deadline, but what Streets is telling us is that-
Oh, I apologize, okay.
The Streets is telling us we need longer because of the road closure and the traffic control plan, because, you know, you're affecting a lot of people in the city.
Happy citizens that way.
Right, so, so they're actually asking to go longer. We will take a look at, when we come back with the final recommendation, we'll look at what other cities are doing, but I think what they're looking at is pretty consistent with other, with what other cities have done for these types of road closure races.
And the, and the, and the items that we already have been doing for quite a while, like many of the YMCA triathlons that they'll do, or the Heart and Soul Run, or some of these, they've already been going on for a few years, this will still work for them, right, this kind of?
Yes, and they're actually, they do a good job getting them in early, so one of the triathlons is usually at least nine months to a year ahead, so.
Gotcha. Well, I was just, I mean, being proactive, you know, the partners that we already have that are doing things like this, when we're changing this process, we ought to let them know that, hey, this is in effect now, just-
Yes.
You've always come below that time threshold, but we just want you to know that you have to.
And, and like Maureen says, we, you know, even if they don't meet the deadlines, even if they don't meet the 30-day deadlines, the staff is able to, they still process a special event application that was technically untimely. It's just you run a bigger risk when you have the road closures of that, you know, of something having to be denied, because you don't have enough time to coordinate everything you have to coordinate.
Go ahead.
So the next area I'd like to review is final fee notification, and one respondent was concerned about not knowing the cost of the fees when the application was submitted. And the reason that an application does not, sorry, applicant does not know all the fees, because there are so many different fees that could be driven by the event, so, you know, additional permits and requirements relating to the activities event might be required for that, so.
But will you be able to give them a, kind of a, a fee schedule of saying, we don't know yet what all items you're gonna need a permit for, but here is a copy of all the fee schedule that may come into play, so at least they see some of those, or is that?
I don't think that's really feasible. We have, our, our fee schedule is based on, you know, the, you know, the big fee schedules, so it's included in there, because these are all driven by the building code and the fire code. And so it's, you know, what they're doing triggers, triggers the need for a certain kind of permit under a building code or a fire code provision, and that, you know, the fee schedule isn't broken down. We might be able to look at some of the events and come up with typical, you know-
Because that would, you know, if I'm a new, a new entity coming into our city wanting to put on this event, and, and, and you say, well, I can't tell you what all the things are yet, they have no idea if this is gonna cost them 80 bucks, or it's gonna cost them 600 bucks. I mean, they just have no clue what to budget for at that point, so.
I guess we could look at what other, other events have done, and what kind of fees have, that have been charged, based on like, if you have a tent of this size, you're gonna look at this kind of money, kind of the typical stuff.
Right.
And this also affects the insurance fees, too, so we have to keep those in mind also. And those, sometimes, we, it's, when we do our outreach with all the city departments, as soon as we find out there is a fee of some kind, we, we notify the applicant right away.
Any other comments?
So the next area is communication of events with the police and fire. One respondent was concerned, because they were being contacted by public safety personnel who was unaware that they had a special event permit already issued to them. And this concern does not involve any changes to the ordinance, but we just want to make sure to continue to work with both the police and fire department, and to make sure that we're getting that information out to them, increase the communication with them, so they know what the events are happening in the city.
Go ahead.
So the next area I'd like to review is the- So, the next area I'd like to review is the City of Goodyear sworn officers. One respondent expressed concerns over the requirement of law enforcement personnel for traffic control on public roadways. Staff's not recommending any changes to the provision in the ordinance that currently requires law enforcement personnel. The concern was raised, had to do with concern over the Goodyear police officers being required to staff these events when off-duty. And the use of the Goodyear off-duty police officers is voluntary, and the ordinance allows for the use of other sworn off-duty enforcement officers from other jurisdictions in case our City of Goodyear officers are not available.
Comments?
Just curiosity question, thank you. So, and I'm not sure, some of our larger churches, every Sunday, have large congregations that are letting traffic out. Do they not have volunteers out there helping control that, or is it actual police officers? I'm just not thinking.
Pinto the church.
Are they required to be having?
No, we have them, it's Skyway Church, we have two of them.
They wouldn't qualify as a special event, so I don't think that Maureen would have that information.
We'll have someone address that, thank you.
Counsel, I know there is no requirement for it, but a lot of, actually, Skyway Church, they just recently started, probably about three months ago. And part of that, they used another agency, but they wanted to start using us in case there was an emergency. And so, it's worked out great so far, but there's no requirement for them to do that.
At my church, we do not use sworn officers, and it's a mess. We can't get out of the parking lot, Mr. City Manager, sometime because they put those cones up, and they don't know where they're going either, so.
That's all on sight, by the way.
Skyway Church, it's very organized.
They are, yes.
It's, it's well-done.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, let's go on.
So, in summary, I would like to reiterate that staff is in support of these changes due to the concerns that have been brought to you. And we believe that we have addressed the major issues that have been brought forward through the survey that was sent out, as well as staff and council concerns. And the city clerk's office serves as the clearinghouse for the special events, and we can make sure that all the departments are aware of the events. And currently, with no ordinance, we're not sure if the applicants are getting all of the information that is needed to hold their event. And to give you an example of this, I just recently received a liquor license application for an extension of premises for Marley's. And our special event ordinance is suspended at this time currently, but I did route the application to all of our city stakeholders for them to review. And planning did come back and say that the extension of premises, there was an ADA compliant issue with parking spaces because where they extended into the parking area, it did cover up those parking spaces. So, city staff contacted the applicant right away, and they are going to readjust their site plan to make sure that those ADA compliant parking spaces are available. And now, I would just like to just quickly summarize the changes that staff is recommending. And the first one is to amend the definition of special events, so to apply to more than 250 instead of the 50. Amend the definition of special event to eliminate the amplified sound. And then to amend the provision of block parties to eliminate the, having to get consent from the residents affected by the street closure, to eliminate the requirement for city-owned traffic barricades, and to eliminate the special event application fee. And if the special event application fee is not waived for all events, then if we could waive for the block parties.
Any final comments? Joe?
I don't know, I guess I'm still stuck on amplified sound from a police standpoint is without certain criteria, and it's subjective as far as if it's too loud or not too loud. Is that a problem if you're charged with somebody with disturbing the fees and you don't have any criteria? It's probably more for the police, criteria as far as decibels or whatever when you go to, into court. I'm just, I would think without some type of standards, that would, you'd kind of be working from behind on something like that. But you're the specialist, so you tell me.
When cars pass that have those big boom boxes, I could-
It's all about the bass.
I could call and make one on that one right away. Go ahead.
We have two ordinances pertaining to it. One's just noise, the other is a disorderly party or gathering or event. And most times when we come out, usually it's after 10 o'clock, and we'll go out there and we'll do a courtesy, hey, you need to quiet this down. If not, we'll come back out. But normally, we'll have to have a victim also. And most neighbors will be a victim to the noise. But usually, we give the people the benefit of the doubt, say, please quiet this down. And also, if there's a DJ, can also tell them, I know what we used to tell them years ago, hey, we'll take your equipment as evidence. The music cuts right down.
So, it's not an issue is what you're, it's not an issue is what you're telling me, right? Okay, all right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Maureen?
Okay, and just to amend the special event ordinance for waivers of fees for neighborhood events sponsored by public schools and/or 501(c)(3) corporations, but we will come back and get that information on the other type of 501(c)s. And then, to amend the ordinance to only require insurance for special events in city parks if required by the Parks Management, Parks Department in connection with the rental of any portion of the park, or if the risk manager requires insurance because of the nature of the special event. And then to amend the, eliminate the requirement insurance for block parties, and then to amend the deadline for applications for special events involving the public and private streets and roadways that I already covered earlier. And that concludes my presentation, and I would just like to thank Sarah Chilton for compiling all of this information for the presentation tonight, and for staff who came tonight to answer the questions, and I really appreciate everybody's help with this.
Any comments? Joanne?
One last question, because I've never done one of the events before. How much of this, or any of it, can be done online to start the process? Do you know?
Well, currently, they have to complete the application and mail it in to us because a signature's required on that. And then, I'm not sure if they-
So, they can print the forms off?
They print the forms out and bring them in to us. And then, at that point, I'm not sure if fire permit fees can be filled out online. I'm not sure about that. So, at this point, there's really not a lot yet that we can do online for these, although we do use email a lot to correspond with them. But as far as the forms, I'm not sure about the fire permit fees.
Well, and that's, that's okay, you can, you can, well, I thank you for going back and tackling this after the first time and alleviating some of the issues.
I think we have an answer to their question, Joanne.
The fire permits do need to be filled out and brought into the office because they require signatures as well. But once we, they don't have to come back in, we'll notify them that the permit is ready. They can pay by a credit card over the phone, and they don't have to come back in.
Maureen, do you give the applicant some of those?
And they can print everything online.
Okay.
Joe?
Ed, just to follow up on that, I know I use it a lot for school, fax it, create an Adobe file, sign it, you know, and put it into my system. Can they do that?
Yes.
And if they had their signature, all you need is the signature on there. So, if they create it to an Adobe and fax it over to you, that's, that's good?
Yeah, we'd take that as well.
Any other questions? Thank you. It was a great briefing, thank you very much. And counsel, lots of good feedback in it, so. Okay, well, we, I think that, let's finish this up. On the second item on the agenda tonight will be a presentation regarding the proposed asset management program that the staff is developing beginning the fiscal year 2015-16. Deputy City Manager Bob Beckley and Finance Director Larry Lang to present. Gentlemen?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. We are before you as part of the budget series to talk about asset management. I want to first commend you for the authorization of $5 million for the last year's budget to really begin our efforts in asset management. We had earlier starts to that, but I think with that commitment and that, that indication by counsel of its importance, it really has sped up the process. What we did over the past year is really to determine what the inventories in each of the areas consisted of. We identified the general fund as being the areas of concern, as we, that was where the funding was budgeted in. And we picked the, the areas with the most value, and that's, that's how we selected these. Just to remind all council members, asset management, it's really a practice to efficiently program the improvements over the long term of the life of those assets. It really helps two things. It helps counsel see what expenditures are planned for the next foreseeable future. In this year, in this case, we're talking about a 10-year time horizon. And it also helps the staff, because the staff then has a better understanding of all of the various pieces of inventory in each of the asset fields. So, we'll go through those shortly. The agenda tonight is just simply, and I think we can, we have plenty of time to go through these issues. First, I'll talk a little about the background, and then the actual needs of the various assets that we've already captured and prepared the inventories for. Following that, Larry will go through and talk about the funding mechanisms and the strategies to fund those over the 10-year period. These list the areas that we feel represent the greatest costs to the city. First, in area pavement management, that was an inventory where we had our own modeling system and consultant go through and take an inventory, updated inventory of all the pavement segments throughout the city, determine what, at what rate the asset will deteriorate, and then come back with a funding mechanism to fund that over a 10-year period. The consultant came up with, the sweet spot was $3 million. If we were to invest at that rate every year for a 10-year period, we would keep our streets in good or better condition, and that is on the current path that we're suggesting here. The second is fleet. What we did there, that's another area, we have the greatest amount of data. We have automated software system, work management system that both captures the work and the work done on the vehicles, and attracts those vehicles over the life of the vehicle, and then shows all the costs involved. When we looked at the costs, and we'll go into a little more detail with that particular asset, it shows a need for 1.8 million. IT, information technology, this is hardware-related. Over the next 10 years, the prediction is, based on equipment inventories, 1.1 million dollars a year. Now, in the parks, this is the asset class that we really, in the last, I think you've seen park audits, and our park staff has done a really good job in terms of trying to quantify all the equipment in the parks. That's what you would see under parks maintenance, the remadas, the playground equipment, some of the structural sidewalk and features in the parks. The parks' equipment would be the rolling stock, if you will, the mowers, the trailers, that type of thing. And the landscape right-of-way would be the areas of primarily the landscape and the various plant materials. So, as you can see, those numbers, based on our early estimates, are, if you annualize them over a 10-year period, the amounts shown in those areas, the largest being the landscape right-of-way. I think if council members recall, a few years passed, there was a granite analysis of how much granite would cost, and I think it was $5 million to replace the granite. This is a projection of including that granite and the plant stock. And then finally, the ballpark equipment. There is, we have a CapEx, we have a replacement schedule. This would be the amount of equipment that is not included in that CapEx program currently.
Joe?
Are there any of the items on that prior slide, Larry, that is currently being funded from ongoing general fund operating revenue?
The, not in the ongoing category. We have been funding all of the, the fleet management, which is something we've been doing. Historically, we've been averaging in the 2 million range per year. But we treat that as one-time funding because there is, on an annual basis, there is discretion to fill it in. So, we don't put it as ongoing in the budget process.
The only reason why I ask is, as I recall, it was 2, 3 million, then we put the 5 in, and this is averaging about 7.1 to 3 million dollars. And you also have, in addition to that, you have money from construction, et cetera, one time you need for your capital projects. So, I'll wait till I see your funding on how that's going to cover, but I'm just curious if some of this was in the ongoing, you know, funding.
Yep.
Just to finish out the slide, the police and fire inventories, they weren't as significant as these, but they are, they represent things such as tasers and that kind of thing. That is still going to be added to this amount. And also, fire, for example, the self-contained breathing apparatus, when you go through and change those out, it's a significant amount of money, which will also be captured, as well as miscellaneous departments, copiers, that kind of thing. Finally, facilities, we have a facilities master plan that is underway right now. So, next year, they'll be developing the, from that study, the master plan facilities replacements that may be necessary. This is a bar chart showing when the various needs, based on needs, when, if you add up all of the pavement, the fleet, the parks right-of-way, the parks facilities, the ballpark, and parks' equipment, IT, and the overall average, the green bar, represents what the average requirement is over the 10-year period. The peaks that you'll see, both in the individual bars, that you'll, you'll see, the parks right-of-way, for example, would balloon up to, in '20. And in '17, fleet will go up significantly in the area of fleet for the three pumpers that are, are going to be scheduled for replacement. This is, this is the schedule in which they may be replaced. However, the funding mechanism to pay for this might be, will be levelized, and Larry will go into that in a few moments. I just wanted to talk, just to give you an example of how the levelization will occur. This is the fleet needs based on the next 10 years. As I mentioned, we have a pretty good data stream for this. And with the three pumpers in '17, you'll see the, the need goes up significantly in '17. But then, throughout the 10-year period, a 1.8 million dollar, million-dollar funding level should be adequate to provide the resources necessary. To levelize this is represented in this, this figure. This is the way in which we will fund this. Purchases may be encountered, the fluctuating levels, but the funding levels in order to meet these needs are going to be programmed in this fashion. I think with that, I turn it over to Larry.
Thank you, Bob. And going through on this whole discussion, I'm going to start with some terminology because as we get into the budget process, a nice, simple concept that Bob has shown you often becomes more complex, and that's because of the nature of governmental accounting and budgeting. So, we're going to talk about three different types of costs and how they're impacted into the budget. The first cost we're going to talk about is the deferred catch-up cost. That is for that maintenance that we have not been doing and need to get in and get caught up. Again, this conversation started several years ago on the granite and in the right-of-way, what that level of concern was. And as Bob said earlier, and I just want to emphasize again, the council action of including $5 million in this year's budget as seed money to help us move forward shows a very long-sighted look at that asset management and how we're going to be able to keep the assets up as we move forward. Very insightful. It's also a very difficult thing to do in a governmental process because there's always something new you'd rather do than to necessarily maintain something until it starts falling apart. And if you can do the ongoing maintenance, you don't have this stuff falling apart. So, I really commend you for that, as Bob indicated. And I think we're going to show you tonight some practical strategies of how we're going to get there. So, the catch-up is one part, then the next part is the annual ongoing requirements. What do we need to fund this on an annual basis so that we don't fall apart? You go in, you catch it up in one year, but then a couple, three years later, if you don't maintain it, or maybe it's five or six, you're back where you started and maybe even a little bit worse. So, the ongoing requirements we're going to talk about, they'll be funded every year to keep it level. And as you saw in the fleet examples we were going through, for example, you saw the numbers should be real high one year and real low the next year. Well, one proposal that came up, how do we level this from a pure operating standpoint? A proposal came up, well, we've got two pumper trucks and a ladder all coming due in one year. year. Why don't we move one of the pumper trucks up? I don't think we want to get in the business of replacing items before they need to be replacing. We want to get in the business of funding them so that the funding is there when they need to be replaced. And so that's kind of the concept we're building on this. So if you look at the second item there, the ongoing requirements, what that is going to be is the general fund commitment that we're going to put into a reserve account for each of these areas. And that'll be the stable amount, kind of flat. Each year, we'll put that in. You might spend it higher or lower in a given period of time. And so the third level is the use of those reserves. And I'm using the term "reserve" for putting those monies in. That's where we're actually going to apply those reserves and buy the pumper truck when it, when it's needed and so forth. So that allows us, at that time, to use the money. The reason I'm going through this with you a little bit is that as we go through the budget process, there are going to be times where you're going to see the numbers more than one time. What we want to do is the deferred catch-up will, we, most of that, you'll see, we're going to apply that out of the funding that the council already provided in fiscal year 15, the $5 million. The, the annual ongoing requirements, we're going to, we're talking about general fund requirements with this, so that's going to come from general fund appropriations on an annual basis. We take that annual requirement, then we're going to spend it, and so that's where we're going to start to show things getting duplicated in the budget. Because here, you're putting it from the general fund into this reserve, but now you're going to spend a portion of the reserve to repair whatever it is that you're doing. At the end of the year, that money that you haven't spent stays in that account so that the next year, when you have more expenditures, you're able to do that replacement. And that's the concept on this.
Joanne?
So, just so I understand this correctly, by, by the way you're describing it, when you say general fund monies, the deferred catch-up is an easy thing, but the ongoing general fund, are we speaking of general fund monies that are coming from sales tax, not constru-, not one-time monies? Are we talking about ongoing revenues becoming this ongoing thing? Or are we talking one-time revenues that are going to be allocated to the general fund? Which, which pool of revenues is it coming from?
And that correlates to Vice Mayor Pizzillo's comments just a little earlier.
Yes.
We have historically and are going to continue to use one-time funds to do this, to put that reserve money in. But with that, we are also proposing, and we haven't worked out the wording in this, but we're proposing a budget policy addition that would show the application of that going into the fund and how that funding will be used. Okay? And as I go further, hopefully I'll bring that up again, but we'll talk. But a very important part also is how is it going to be used? I remember, I'm going to say eight or nine years ago, I was relatively new with the, with the city of Goodyear, and the fleet program was relatively new at that particular time. And the conversation about it came up in the context that the vehicles were being replaced, but they weren't being pulled out of service. And it was kind of looked at at that point in time as, in fact, someone actually said this, "Our replacement wink, wink, process." No, that's not a rationalization to buy something else. It's not a rationalization to pull something out of service that's no longer fit for service to use for a different purpose. This funding is to replace and maintain, be it the equipment, be it the rights-of-way, be it the streets that we have. Of course, the streets you aren't going to reuse, that's not an issue. It gets more to be an issue with, with the equipment.
Joe?
Are you going to set up a separate fund? When you're talking about, this fund of budget, it'll be easier to track. So the money leaves the general fund, goes into there, and then you'll have the detail within that fund as, as things go out. And the second part of that is, I don't want to assume because you know what that does, but you're going to have a schedule that matches up to that 7.3 million that you had listed there, that shows timing of all those pieces of equipment. And the third piece, and it's probably more for Bob, is, we talked about it, I think it was last, last meeting, when it comes to the granite and the replacement of bushes, I really would like a real close look at the right-of-way and our policies to ensure that if we've got bushes, again, that aren't drought resistant, that are growing like crazy, and we're spending extra time cutting them, that are a safety issue because they're growing up fast and we've got to get out there, that we also take a look at that. Because I've been through the city in several places, and it just seems to me, and again, I'm, I'm not a plant guy, but it seems some of them have the wrong type of plants in those right-of-ways in which they grow quick, we got to go trim them, and then we're back again. So I'm hoping they will look at that. Again, a little sidebar with Bob as we kind of go forward on that.
Okay, let me.
Would something like that come up in the lean program? Would that be something that would trigger us up in the lean program? I don't know.
Yes, yes, it could.
Yes, okay.
It could.
It could, okay.
I, I'll try to answer a couple of those. One is, is we absolutely are going to set each of these areas up as a separate fund. Now, when I say a separate fund, that's for tracking for budget purposes and also for keeping the cash carried over. When you see your, your comprehensive annual financial report, they will be shown in there as earmarks of your fund balance, that cash left over, as a subcomponent of the general fund. That's due to technical accounting standards, but we're going to be tracking these, each of them, as separate funds. And all of these that we're talking about tonight, Bob indicated, there's a couple areas that we don't have in right now. Another one that I don't think Bob mentioned or may have is in the facilities. We haven't really completely got all of that as that plan is still in process. So we've got some more, but we've got the significant ones. And all of these have detailed schedules of when that funding needs to be expected. And those detailed schedules, and this is the same chart that Bob was showing you before, didn't change it, but I thought I would show you, or use this as a visual of what we're talking about. So if you look at all of these, these are all of them combined, and that average is about 7.3 million dollars per year for each, for the next 10 years. Okay? But you'll notice some of those we don't hit. Fiscal year 16, our actual needs will be less than that. But fiscal year '20, it'll be quite a bit higher. We want the budget to be stable on that amount at the 7.3 million dollars. Now, that number sounds scary. I recognize it. But let me go through a few things, few numbers with you that might give you a little comfort on this. I was actually pleasantly surprised when these numbers came in. And that takes a lot to make me pleasantly surprised. I tend to be concerned a lot more. First of all, you've, you've been, for years, putting in 2, 2.5 million, I think the lowest that we put into fleet, even during the recession, was a million and a half. So we've been putting 2 million a year into fleet all, all along. Okay? Second, this includes $3 million a year for streets. This is the one area, streets, we're going to do as an appropriation for the full 3 million. They'll do 3 million a year, each year, as opposed to rolling that fund over. That's the one exception to all of these.
That's what I was asking about, the ongoing, because that's kind of what we, it's coming from the general funds. And I guess you can call one time, even though you can cut it off. But again, technically, isn't it coming from the ongoing? Because it's coming off the top, it's, it's not really part of your construction sales tax, it's not really part of...
It's coming from one-time funding sources, although when you get down to the streets, because we've been doing 1.2 million a year, about 400,000 of that has been coming from ongoing sources and from the actual HERF revenues. The remaining has been general fund efforts. And technically, as we've included it in there, you're right, we've called it ongoing. But overall, as part of this program, we're trying to retain the flexibility that it doesn't have to be ongoing, allowing you, the city council, the opportunity to look at that on an annual basis. And if you don't think the program is working as well as it should, and you aren't getting the information you need, you can have that discretion. And that comes more in the one-time type category.
The only reason why I mention it, Larry, is the fact that there's the 3 million or so roughly that's going in there. That heartburn, as you say, you're pleasantly surprised, becomes a little less because some of that's been coming annually anyway from the general fund to cover streets. Because we've been doing it every year, as far as I can remember. Some money is coming from the general fund to cover streets. So that reduces that heartburn a little bit, knowing that, that case itself, so.
Absolutely. Technology is another area that we've invested fairly well in, technology replacement. And it's really fluctuated low, high, over the years. But we've used about $500,000 as a kind of a placeholder each year as we're building the budget. And then we start with the discussion with IT as to where that needs to go. So another example of the same thing.
Joanne? Quick, quick question. Some of these items that you have listed there, has it been removed from the CIP to bring over into asset management? How does, how is that being reflected in the CIP now?
Very good question. And actually, in the 10-year CIP, as we've adopted it, the extra 1.8 million per year was in a number of those years. So we have had some duplication in there in our 10-year capital improvement. Now, it wasn't all 10 years of what we adopted last year. So we're going to be applying that in. And again, we've already counted on spending that.
Right, right. I just, okay.
So, yeah. And that's part of why, again, because of, of actions that you've taken, the numbers that we're talking about here are not alarming.
Okay.
This is really a good news story from, you know, from a budget perspective and that kind of stuff.
Bill?
Larry, and I know you don't like to do rough numbers, but in a rough number kind of capacity, do we have any idea, this asset management program, and I know we can't quantify the dollar amount of the, the value of a, of a mile of pavement, but maybe somebody can, do we have an idea what we're talking about as far as total assets of the city that, you know, we, we keep looking at 7.3 million dollars a year, but I think we're talking about several hundred million, if not close to the B-word, worth of assets?
That's absolutely correct. When you get to the assets and the net book value, if you use the accounting standards that we have, now there you do, in, in the numbers that I'm remembering, you're incorporating in your water and sewer infrastructure, which are not part of this discussion, but equally there. Our numbers are in the 400 to 500,000 dollar range.
Four.
And I've been kind of kicked a little bit. Four, four, I'm sorry, 400 to 500 million, I'm sorry.
I didn't think you meant thousands.
Thousand million, they all look alike.
Seven million aside for 400.
I understood million, so I'm okay.
Yeah, two zeros.
You just like to clarify that number one more time. Larry, just say the number one.
In the 400 to 500 million dollar range.
Got it.
And, you know, there are a lot of assets that we're talking about that we need to be maintaining. And that is why you have been moving forward with this project.
One point on total asset value, that's one of the metrics that frequently agencies use. What is your asset level for each of those various assets? Are you maintaining your asset value, or is it decreasing over time?
I'm going to go through the next, kind of quickly, but it'll show you how it applies as we're closing in on the, the regular council meeting. And here's some numbers on the catch-up. The right-of-way maintenance came in at 2.7 million. That's lower than what we expected. I think several of us a year ago had heard a number closer to 4.5 million. But as I worked through, it came in on this. Bob and I have discussed this number. This is what we're going to be, we're proposing to include as an appropriation. But let's understand, from a practical standpoint, that may be very difficult to complete all of that work within one year. We would rather appropriate it and try to get it done. If we don't get it done, if we do a million and a half instead of the 2.7, the million two will stay in the fund, you keep working to get it done. To all of a sudden expect to do that much in one year is quite a bit to take on. Park maintenance catching up a little bit is about 965,000. Equipment and rolling stock at about 57,000. So those are some of the one-time costs that we have allocated. We also have about $700,000 in costs from, from the original 5 million dollar appropriation that would be related to police, fire, and even in the finance department. We've got a postage machine that is on its last legs, time to replace it. Now, that's $35,000, that's not the big number in it, but we have a lot of equipment in police and fire that, that requires replacement. The allocation to reserves, this is kind of what we're looking at putting aside over the next few years. $2 million for fleet. You saw on the first slide, it said, a few slides ago, it said 1.8 million when Bob was talking about it. This number's sand too. The difference is, is for cash flow purposes, we're getting hit fairly heavy with three trucks in one year potentially. So we wanted the first couple of years to be just a little bit higher so that that cash will be there at that point in time. Technology, hardware, a million dollars, and then the rights-of-way that, that we just talked about a little bit ago, but this is what we're planning on adding to the reserve. This is what we would reasonably expect every year we would be adding into these accounts. And then the non-reserve allocations that we're looking at, which...
Bill?
Larry, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can you go back one slide?
Yes.
That last line looks like you're, the last two actually looks like it's a double whammy. Parks maintenance and then parks and stadium equipment. Are we talking about like plants and swing sets and park maintenance, and then parks' equipment as lawn mowers and leaf blowers? And is that, is that what I'm seeing?
That's, that's exactly. I'm glad you caught that. You know, that's where you see the term "rolling stock." You see the term "equipment," it all means different things to different people, but we're trying to get, you know, the lawn mowers. And, and when you talk in the stadium, you know, we bought a lot of lawn mowers back here about seven or eight years ago. They've mowed a lot of grass. Have they all been replaced, that type of thing? And then the other allocations that we're talking about this, this year, the pavement management, of course, the 3 million dollars, that was already kind of appropriated, as you've suggested, in various places. Fire has got a big number in there, the SCBA. That is breathing apparatus, set aside some money a couple of years ago, about 300,000. The total shift out of all of that's a million dollars. We've been doing it in 300,000 dollar increments. That's an example of what the program will be doing. We should be doing that over a 10-year period of time, if that's how long that equipment lasts. When you make that transition, you need to kind of make it all at once so that everyone's got the same type of equipment, you're standardized, and so forth. And that was my quick version to get to the end. Take any more questions, you may have.
Any questions? Oh, did you have a question? Okay. Thank you very much. This is going to be adjourned, and we have to start the other meeting right at 6 o'clock. Meeting adjourned.